All right. Good evening to the North Idaho College Board of Trustees special meeting on May thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-two. If you, Mark, if you would confirm, we have a forum, please?
Mr. Chairman, we have a quorum of all five board members.
All right, thank you. If you all would join me to do the pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, the first item on the agenda is an action item. Presidential Search Committee representation slash change. David Wald will start that.
I move that in the light of Ken Howard's willingness to resign from the search committee and as co-chair of that committee, we've replaced his co-chair of the search committee by trustee Burchett.
Second.
I have a motion. I have a second. Do I have any comments or questions? Seeing none, we will move to a vote. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say nay. The motion carries. Next on the agenda is again an action item, compensation parameters for presidential candidates and to determine dates for final candidate interviews. John Getty is the point for that.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think this is a place for some board discussion. We have a motion ready to make, but we need to establish some parameters, a range that might be offered to a candidate, a finalist. And there's been a lot of discussion. I've looked at the salary ranges of the other community college presidents, and I think I'm going to suggest that the base salary be someplace between two hundred and twenty and two hundred and forty thousand with the realization that the contract will be negotiated, then there may be some additional costs involved in benefits provided in a contract. And, Mr. Chairman, if there's no discussion, I'm ready to make a motion.
Well, we can have discussion before the motion or after motion second, but if we would like to have some now, we can. That would be fine. Anybody have any discussion, comments, or questions?
I would, okay, Mr. Chairman.
Trustee McKenzie.
If I just may express my opinion, I'd say that's probably. I would like to see a lower range. Expanded below personally. I was thinking more even to the one eighty range. And I'm not necessarily saying that it's going to be one eighty, of course, because all it depends on the candidate and years of experience. But that's what I was initially thinking when I saw this agenda item.
All right, well, I guess I'll weigh in with some comments. This has been a topic of conversation. I actually addressed the you know, faculty assembly about this. Molly Machad invited me and I talked about this topic. And I've talked about it for my entire time on the board. Compensation is always an interest to me as a fiduciary and the contracts themselves and the lengths of the contracts. When we went to the acting president, as I said, when I spoke with the faculty assembly, we reset briefly at two hundred thousand. When we went to the interim president, we reset at a hundred and eighty thousand. And I thought about that. A hundred and eighty thousand doesn't sound like a lot, it seems to some people. But when I say it is fifteen thousand dollars a month here in North Idaho, I think that number resonates a little differently. So I did talk with Dr. Wald a little bit about this. Thought I had that silenced. I apologize. So much for my high-tech phone. And I had expressed to him that I had been kind of at a base of a hundred and eighty was my thought to reset. And again, I talked about that about with the finances and the numbers and has publicly had put that out there. As we discussed it, I let's see, I guess we agreed or we talked about it, maybe that I could consider one eighty to two hundred thousand. So I'm a little surprised by your starting point, to be honest. But one eighty to two hundred for me, for me, I think is a good place to start. I think there's some risks and why we need to start a little bit lower. One is you're going to hire somebody and we don't know if the faculty and staff will will take to them and if it's going to be a good fit or not. Two, we are going to have an election in November and we're going to have a new board. So hopefully it's a board that that president wants to work with and hopefully it's a president that that board wants to work with. Third, fourth. The better he does and the longer he's here, it gives us the ability to increase and give him raises and incentive and to reward him for a job well done. The higher you start, I think the more you're limited in how you're going to move it up. And I don't know that there's as much incentive there. So for all those reasons, I'd like to start a little bit lower with the ability to reward a job well done. And we look at this on an annual basis and then we can bump him up or her. Whoever it might be. So those are my thoughts. I just think we're dangerous to start too high. I think CWI is an outlier. Dr. Wald and I talked about that and looking at the others, including Eastern Idaho, I think we're in an okay spot for just to start. Are there any other comments or suggestions, questions?
Mr. Chairman.
Trustee Getty.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. If we start too low, we are not going to get a quality candidate. It's going to take some doing for a candidate to come here. It's a cost or housing market now is at a premium. There is a president in this state that's earning three hundred thousand dollars a year. I think that's out of feasible range. But I want to find a quality candidate and I don't think we're going to find it for less than a salary range of between two hundred and twenty and two hundred and forty thousand for a base salary. Therefore, I move that the board instruct the presidential search consultant to advise candidates salary for this position is anticipated to be in the range of two hundred and twenty to two hundred and forty thousand dollars.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
May I have one more discussion or I guess we can?
After the second.
I second.
Do you have a second? Okay, we can continue with more discussion. Trustee McKenzie.
Would you be open to a mixture to get to two thirty for the first year as there is travel anticipating, assume travel or something to where like the first year he maybe even gets a thirty thousand moving stipend and then it be say two ten with room to go up to where you think would be.
Mr. Chairman.
Trustee Getty.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Normally additional benefits are negotiated in the contract. That would include such things as moving expense, health insurance, potentially retirement. What I'm talking about is the base salary.
Which he'll already be eligible for Percy. If we do something additional for retirement, full benefit package with health and dental, vision, disability. And you throw on any of the other things, we're going to quickly be approaching the three hundred thousand dollars anyway. And quite frankly, I think most people in this county would be appalled at those numbers. When it came out public with the former president was making, it wasn't just eye rolling, there was some people that were rather perturbed about it. And I got a lot of feedback that they couldn't believe that I was party to that, that we had been paying that much to start with. So I think we set ourselves up for quite a bit of criticism of those sorts of numbers. I think the average person in Cootney County, especially the more you move away from downtown Coeur d'Alene, is going to chafe at those numbers and think that they're unreasonable and too high for a community college. Whose enrollment, we're only four thousand, five thousand students. I mean, even in the world of community colleges, we're small potatoes. And yeah, the CWI guys making that money, but their enrollment's like four times ours. And there's some things we have that they don't. In Eastern Idaho, College of Eastern Idaho doesn't have all that we have. Closest is probably CSI. We're still pretty close to them with the numbers we're talking before we get way high with what Dean Fisher's making. So again, I caution us to not start too high because it's going to continue to grow as we do talk about the others additions to the potential base contract.
Chairman, who should?
Trustee McKenzie.
Just for context, too, I'd be willing to guess, I don't know the exact number, but looking at the different salaries for the past couple of years, I would very confidently guess that the average salary of North Idaho College is between sixty and seventy K. So to have a president's base salary close to, sorry for my math, four times that on top of additional benefits and deferred retirement packages. It just seems not.
Mr. Chairman.
Trustee Getty.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would remind this board that whoever is hired is going to be stepping into what remains of a toxic environment. And we're going to have to pay a premium for that cost.
Oh, please, not there. But yeah, you know, I've been hearing those things. Okay, I'm going to comment now. Let's call myself. I'm so tired of that red herring. Did you tell me why all those people applied then? Why did everybody fight to become the acting and interim presidents? Even the people internally, even the people that retired said, well, I'll stay if I get to be president. I mean, it's amazing how many people want to be president of this college. And what do we have? Was it fifty-seven? I mean, some crazy numbers from all over the country. I mean, Oklahoma, Kentucky, Texas, you name it, East Coast, West Coast. So tell me what I don't know or tell me what Angela Probar's telling all these people that everybody thinks this is a dream job and they all want to come here when supposedly we've we were underwater. The college is on life support. I saw that in the paper the other day. Oh, we're going to lose our accreditation. And no, we're not. We're financially insolvent. I know that Sarah Garcia is probably indignant about hearing some of that nonsense and about the thing about the bond rating. Tenth of a percent. I mean, come on, seriously? So we've built a nice narrative and, you know, Sonny's been helpful to Rick and the gang and gave you guys cover and Mike Patrick does that from the press. That's fine. The tragedy here is that you guys have manufactured and created this crisis by self-reporting on yourself, on ourselves and shooting ourselves in the foot. The college is functioning. We just had a very successful graduation today. Kids are being taught, teachers are teaching. Yeah, it's a terrible situation to be here on the river and the lake at this beautiful campus and this beautiful community where everybody and their dog wants to come to, which is why you just told me that the average price of a house has gone from two hundred and fifty thousand to five hundred thousand. Why my younger son, his wife can't get a house because she can't afford the payment? So now that I don't accept that answer at all, that people won't come here because obviously we've told them that must be okay. And Angela's been doing that all along. So and we waited to just now to have this conversation about salary. So, you know, I guess we waited, we waited, we waited, and everything's nearly going to be okay. And then we'll have this new board after the state board does their thing and the governor jumped in and helped. How much does a trustee cost, by the way? I'd like to know, or two or three trustees. So here we are. And so I don't, I don't, that's not a valid statement that somebody's coming into this. Obviously their eyes wide open and they've been informed of what they're walking into. So to overpay, I disagree.
Mr. Chairman, a point order, please. I'd like to remind the board that this motion is simply to set a range that the the search committee can advise candidates. It does not establish what the pay is, what the compensation is. That will be when this committee makes its selection, that will be discussed with the board and it will be negotiated with the board and final approval of any compensation package will rest with this board, but that we're not at that point yet.
No, but we're providing a reasonable expectation.
I have a question with that.
Trustee McKenzie.
Mr. Lyons, so if this board says the range of, would you repeat the range again? Was it two twenty, two thirty?
Two twenty to two forty.
Two twenty to two forty. And let's say for some reason this board decided to pay with the final interviews, two twenty. That would be abnormal and unexpected and problematic. Would that not be, Mr. Lyons?
Mr. Chairman, trustee McKenzie. I can't say that that would be abnormal. I would say that this would be a range that would be that would be told to final candidates that this is what the board is considering. So when you get to that point, you will make your decisions based on the candidate that's available, what the board can agree to. So no, I can't say that that would be unusual. It will be whatever it is, depending on what the board and the candidate agrees to.
Comments, questions?
Mr. Chairman, questions?
You bet. Trustee Burchett.
If you look at the six local colleges, what their budget is and what they're paying their president, if you throw out the high and low and average that percentage based on NIC's twenty twenty-one budget, the position should pay about two hundred and twenty-six thousand. If you base it on the new budget for two for twenty-three, they should pay two hundred and forty-seven thousand. So the two twenty to two forty range falls right in the average base salary based on the college budgets for local colleges.
Sir, may I ask which colleges you're referencing?
College of Eastern Idaho, Spokane Falls Community College, College of Southern Idaho, NICs in there, Spokane Community College, and College of Western Idaho.
Okay. So we've got a couple from Washington. And then we have the CWI one, which is a real outlier, which I think is the one that's definitely scheming the percentages a little bit.
Correct. So that's why I threw out the top and the bottom. If you look at College of Southern Idaho, which has a budget just below North Idaho College, they're paying their president two hundred and thirty thousand even.
And what is the College of Eastern Idaho again?
Excuse me, that was College of Southern Idaho. Oh, what is College of Eastern Idaho paying?
I don't have it right in front of me.
Three hundred and fifteen thousand.
Well, that's.
But they have a budget that's thirty million plus higher than.
That would be College of Western Idaho, I believe.
Oh, you're right. Excuse me.
That's okay.
College of Eastern Idaho was a hundred and ninety-six thousand.
Okay.
But it has a budget of approximately thirty thousand below North Idaho College.
All right, are there any other comments or questions?
I'll make a maybe contrarian motion to move the range down to one ninety.
That would, you would need to ask for an amendment to the motion, sir.
So I make a motion to amend his motion to make the minimum range to be one ninety.
Is there an upper upper limit to that?
The upper limit can stay. But the minimum range.
So that would be one hundred and ninety to two forty? The original range, if I understood it correctly, was two hundred and twenty thousand to two hundred and forty thousand. So if you wanted to amend it with a lower threshold of a hundred and ninety thousand, not adjusting the upper, that would make it one hundred and ninety thousand to two hundred and forty thousand.
So moved.
Okay, so we have a motion to amend.
Mr. Chairman, you don't have a second.
I haven't asked for one yet, sir. I was just clarifying the motion. Usually at this point, I look over at Mr. Lyons because he's the one writing it down, trying to make sure that he has has it correctly down. I will second trustee McKenzie's motion for the purposes of discussion.
Mr. Chairman, just to clarify, so the board understands, we have an original motion, but right now we're talking up. We're discussing a motion to amend the original motion that has to be voted on. First, the motion to amend the original motion is to change the range from one ninety to two hundred and forty.
That is correct. I understand. Is that clear to everybody else? We're working with the amendment at this time. Are there any other comments or questions or discussion on the amendment to the original motion to adjust the range, the lower end of the range from two twenty to one hundred and ninety thousand? All right, I'll see the discussions, comments. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say nay.
Nay.
The motion fails. Back to the original motion. Is there any other questions, comments, or discussion on the original motion? Not seeing any, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say nay. The motion carries.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, trustee Getty.
We have a second motion. I move that the board instruct the administration to work with the search consultant to determine dates for final candidate interviews.
Do we have a second for the motion?
Second.
I have a second for the motion. Is there any comments, question, or discussion on the motion?
Just for clarification.
Trustee McKenzie.
Chair Banducci, trustee Getty, that's for the search committee?
Mr. Chairman, trustee. It is the search committee, yes.
Okay, thanks. Thank you for that.
With the consultant.
All right. Is there anything else? All right, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say nay. The motion carries. The next item on the agenda again is an action item. It's property and casualty insurance coverage reconsideration. Trustee Getty and Mr. Lyons.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As was reported in the paper and with Dr. Sabaly's report to or email to the college, the North Idaho College has been, has been, has received notice of non-renewal from the Idaho County's Risk Management Program. That non-renewal will be effective July one, so our last day of coverage is June thirty. It's an extremely tight timeframe for the college's current insurance agent to put together any alternative bids. I understand from the president that there have been a couple of other companies that have expressed some interest. The joint powers agreement under which the ICRAP works and who, which every one of the entities has signed allows for a decision of the board from ICRAP to be appealed. And I suggest that that's the first thing that we need to do is make arrangements to, for our board to appeal to their board. And it's got to be done very, very soon. So I would move that the board authorize the NIC board chair to request a hearing before the ICRAP board to revisit and seek rescission of the decision not to renew the college's property and casualty insurance. And I'll second that.
All right, we have a motion and a second. We are open for discussion. Right, nobody else does. I have some. Been a number of inquiries since this hit the paper. And most you saw it above the fold on front page. And a lot of people have, again, have had a lot of questions. And so they're wondering why we lost the insurance and why are we appealing it and why don't we go to the commercial coverage and what exactly transpired or contributed to being here? And the paper had an interesting perspective. I'd like to share some additional information. On that table over there is a copy of the letter from ICRAP. You'd like to see what the actual letter says. Also on that table is a copy of the loss runs. Now, the paper very casually, I hope we have represented from the presser today. That would be very nice, represented from the press.
Chairman, this chairman.
But it was a large windstorm. They mentioned it briefly.
Mr. Chairman, that loss run is not public information. That is confidential.
Well, apparently it is now, sir. I've made it public. And I'm going to, I'm going to talk about this because obviously they know about all this and they're smart about it. So the windstorm that may have had some impact was one point five million plus of the two point three million. The rest of it's under the prior president, EEOC complaint, whistleblower discrimination retaliation misconduct, IHRC retaliation discrimination, disability, alleged wrongful advice from advisors. Another IHRC complaint, another IHRC complaint. You know, I've had, we've had no personnel claims under Dr. Sabaly, but we had plenty under the prior administration. And then the only claim that's been of recent, which is a small percentage, just barely ten percent of this, was from the same individual who was in charge for all these other claims. So the fact that people are saying that we don't work with ICRAP, that's not true. I have the report from ICRAP because I worked with the attorney for ICRAP for over two months, talked to him every day, multiple times some days. Now, one of our trustees called him up and said, hey, here's what I want you to do. So Christie says, you've got to tell Todd to do this, and this is what you need to tell him. And the ICRAP attorney says, no, that's not what I'm doing and that's not right. And that's not what we do. She never spoke to him again. So she puts in the paper and tells people that ICRAP says that NIC refused to work with them or that I refuse to work with them. Not true. I worked extensively with the ICRAP attorneys, have the report, in fact, have the cover letter from Mark Lyons on the report. Alluded to the report with Dr. Wald the other day when he was in my office. So I want the people to know that this is wrong and that Todd Banducci and by extension Greg McKenzie did not lose our coverage. Oh, Rick's thing is barely ten percent, but it's all the rest of it, including the windstorm that was kind of an, oh, by the way. So it's nice for people to take shots and to completely repeat lies and misinformation and say things that like, we're not working with ICRAP. I have a whole folder from working with ICRAP. And the report from Mr. Hall that says, here's your options. And then I followed down as he described the options and how we needed to proceed with those options. So we just need to set the record straight. There's a whole lot of stuff, most of it in the eighteen, nineteen, nineteen, twenty, and twenty twenty-one into the beginning there. So it's, that's not anything to do with the last year. And, and I don't like being maligned and mistruths and lies in the paper that are being repeated. So I guess to the press, if you're going to help the college, some journalistic integrity and honesty would be helpful and accurate information. And once things have been repudiated and you've given correct information, please stop using the old incorrect information. So the sheet's over there for everybody to see and you can see what the actual claims were. You can see who was responsible for the claims were. And don't hang it around my neck one more second. So there we are.
Mr. Chairman, can I speak to the motion?
You certainly may, sir.
You and I talked about, you and I talked about this at length.
Yeah, we did.
And you shared with me a lot of information. I don't think the motion is accusing anybody. I think what we're doing here is we're saying, what can we do to remedy the situation? So this is just a positive step to try to see what we can do to remedy a non-renewal from this company. So let's, let's stick with the motion, stick with the presence and not spend a lot of time in the past.
I understand, sir. I just thought it was appropriate to have some backstory and some context and narrative for those that were trying to understand how we got to where we got. Because there's a lot of folks that want to assess blame and I think that can be done inaccurately. And so I think we need to clear the air to understand fully why we are in the situation that we're in and what constituted the claims. So that was the purpose today. As part of this discussion right now. All right, we have the motion to appeal the decision by ICRAP to end our coverage. Is there any more discussion, questions, or comments? All right, seeing none, I will call for a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. The motion carries. Next on the agenda item is action item, the leadership changes for board officers. Does anybody have any motions that they would like to make at this time or any comments or questions on this topic?
You were going to make a motion. You're making a motion.
Only if that's the only one we're making at the end. Only if that's the only one we're making at the end.
You can do it now.
Are there other motions to be made? Trustee Breshet, did you have something to say, sir?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to nominate Trustee Getty for the position of vice chairman.
All right, we have a motion on the floor. Do I have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Is there any comments, discussion or question on the motion? I'm not seeing any. We will take a vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, please say nay. The motion carries.
Mr. Chairman.
Trustee Getty.
I would nominate Trustee Breshet for Secretary Treasurer.
All right, thank you, sir. We have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, we have a second on the motion. Is there any comments, discussion, questions, anything? All right, not seeing any. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say nay. The motion carries. I will make the last motion. Upon conclusion of this meeting, I would like to make a motion for Dr. David Wald to become the chairman of the Board of Trustees. I look forward to working with him and I'm sure that he will, an outstanding job as the, as the chair. Do I have a second for my motion?
Second.
Trustee Getty, seconds. Are there any comments, discussion or questions? All right, not seeing any, we will take a vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, please say nay. The motion carries. That concludes our business.
Trustee, Trustee Banducci, can I just make some closing remarks?
I apologize. I did not know that you had any.
I, one, one wanted to thank all of our trustees for showing up this morning for the breakfast to honor our employees and our staff, staff and faculty for that celebration. It was nice to see all of you there. It was, it was wonderful to see you guys work together this week, communicate. And I look forward to working with all of you. We had a great commencement. Eight hundred and fifty students graduated from NIC today. A hundred and four dual credit students received their degree. And we had three hundred and fifty kids walk across. There was a lot of great things to celebrate here today. And I just wanted to take a moment to recognize that at the end of this meeting as well, that NIC had a great celebration for their faculty, staff and students today. And I wanted to thank everybody from events and staff to landscaping, to our faculty, to Dr. Silvas and Sarah and Shannon for all the work they did to pull off this today. So thank you to them.
Definitely Shannon for getting the regalia on us correctly. Appreciate that. Is there anything else? I guess it's sort of a, for the remarks of the good of the order, if anybody had anything else. All right, then with that, we'll adjourn the meeting.